Good afternoon. This, the 32nd meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called order. If you have any cell phones, either put them on vibrate or turn them off. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Kevin Daniels of St. Martin's Church of Price. If everyone will please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor.
Let's pray, Count, too. Before asking you, God, for anything, we thank you for everything. We acknowledge your presence. We acknowledge your cosmic supervision over our lives. We acknowledge your masterful care of not only the planet but specifically of this great city. We thank you today for this day. We thank you for broadening over us and hovering over this great chamber. We decree and declare that your attentive watch of the leadership of these 14 districts and the leadership of this great president and this great mayor, that you would continue to broaden over them and to keep them. Hover your grace over these 14 councilmen and women here in the city. Catherine Pugh and Bernard Young, Zeke Cohen, Brandon Scott, Ryan Dorsey, Bill Henry, Isaac Schlefer, Sharon Green Middleton, Leon Pinkett, Christopher Burnett, John Bullock, Edward Reisinger, Eric Costello, Robert Stokes, Shannon Snead, Mary Pat Clark. Endow them right now with your anointing and your presence for progress. Endow them with your anointing for excellence and exceptional leadership. Endow them with the anointing of public debate, political debate and dissemination. Dissent without darkness, disagreement without destruction. Endow them with the anointing of health and wellness. Endow them with long arms that they are able to hold and care for, that diverse communities, constituents, the traumatized and the troubled, the weak and the strong, the poor and the rich, the stranger and the foreigner, the potential and the problematic. Sanctify and consecrate this city for progress. Sanctify and consecrate this city for possibilities. Sanctify and consecrate this chamber for potential. We release it to be so in this chamber. So it is in your great name, we pray. Everybody say amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor Daniels? Thank you so much. I want to thank Pastor Daniel for the invocation. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark. Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you. This evening, we welcome Mr. Adam Rosenberg of the Baltimore Child Abuse Center. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Adam Rosenberg. I am the executive director of Baltimore Child Abuse Center. We are Baltimore's nationally accredited children's advocacy center. I've had the honor and pleasure of hosting many of you at our center there or testifying before you. It's certainly appreciated to be able to share a few minutes as to what we're working on and obviously how we can continue to partner with the city in keeping our children safe. Pastor, I certainly appreciate your remarks and what particularly was resonating with me was the traumatized and the troubled. And we see over 1,300 children a year from Baltimore who have been the traumatized and the troubled there. These are children who've been victims of sexual abuse, physical abuse, human trafficking, entering into foster care, witness to violence. We're the third oldest center of its kind in the country, the first in the state of Maryland, and we've been evolving and adapting our mission for the last 30 years to be able to meet the needs of those traumatized and troubled. Our program is a healthy balance of support, not only from the city of Baltimore, the state of Maryland, but also philanthropic support through our own events and our community events and grants from the community there. It's really our mission and purpose to be able to make sure that every child who has been a victim of abuse or an adverse childhood experience has the opportunity to be heard by our forensic interviewers and our medical staff. And what our new recent development is, is to have therapy as well. We can heal these kids and we can help them recover from these traumas to get to, again as Pastor Daniel said, also to the promise of what they can have tomorrow there. In your folders, and you don't have to refer to them now, but there's a very colorful map, which unfortunately looks like the same butterfly map we quite often see in Baltimore, which mirrors many of the crimes and other troubles that are there. This heat map is a representation of where children live, not where they were victims of abuse, but where they are currently living who've been victims of child abuse. You can certainly go and find your own neighborhood and see where those concentrations are. And it's emblematic of our deep dive into data, that we look as to where we need to be able to provide those services and additional resources to be able to help that because we know, and some of the material that's in here, put together by my colleague Joyce Lombardi, our Director of Government Relations, is that if we can respond to these kids early on, we can prevent future problems from happening. One of the biggest connections to these adverse childhood experiences of sexual abuse and witness to violence and living in households of poverty or foster care or mental illness is opioid addictions. And the numerous studies have been done that show the links between adults who are addicted to opioids and their experience they had as a child there. And so children who've had multiple of these traumas, victims of abuse, sexual abuse, are more likely to be victims of opioids later in life, more likely to be victims of domestic violence, more likely to be victims of crime. And so it's a long strategy. This is not something that fixes itself in six months or a year, but I encourage this body to be considering the many things that can be done to help us work with you and work with the community to be able to respond as quickly as possible to help reduce that there. I'd be remiss if I didn't share that we have a very, benefit from a very long and strong partnership from the police department and the Department of Social Services and the State's Attorney's Office and the Office of the Mayor and this office as well. And we don't do this by ourselves. We're only successful because we pull everybody around the proverbial Thanksgiving table together and Thanksgiving is never fun if you do it by yourself. We've hosted this gathering for a very long time to make sure that we can bring out the best in all of our different disciplines there, who are able to check their collective egos at the door for the benefit of making children's lives better there. The very last initiative I'll share with you is we're also working with youth organizations. Our Blueprint for Child Protection was recently funded to help Northwest Baltimore there. The Associated Jewish Federation had done a Shark Tank-like summit, looking for innovative ideas, and someone had funded us to be able to implement that there for that community. But it's a blueprint that can be used for any community there. And in my conversations with Councilman Scott, we've talked about, you know, how do we implement this with Parks and Rec, for example? You, other than schools, your Parks and Rec departments are seeing more children than anywhere else in the city there. And how do we make sure that a child does not fall victim to maltreatment or unintended supervision there? And so what should we do to train people who are really looking out to keep kids safe but may not necessarily know any better there? And there's great opportunity before us with the Youth Fund, with Parks and Rec and these different programs. We just want to make sure that the people watching those kids are going to keep them safe. And so I look forward to following up with all of you as well as to how we can help educate the city's youth protection workers, make sure that there are policies in place and that when abuse occurs, it is reported and swiftly dealt with there so we can keep every child safe. Thank you for your time and attention. I encourage you, if you haven't been up to see us, we're at 23rd North Charles. You're welcome anytime.
Thank you, and thank you for the great work that you all do on behalf of our children.
Thank you, Mr. President.
This is the Council of Customs Generalize the invocation, ask for motion, generalize the prayer, motion by Councilman Costello, second by Councilman Branch, I mean, second by Councilman Pinkett. I just lost it. Well, anyway, motion by Councilman Pinkett, second by Councilman Scott. All those favor generalize the invocation, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. We will now proceed with the adoption of the general.
Mr. President, the general of the proceedings from the April 16th City Council meeting is on councilmembers' desks.
They're most approve the general. Motion by Councilman Costello, second by Councilwoman Snead. All those favor adopting the general, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently the general is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on page two to five. Executive nomination.
EA 18-0145 Samuel A. Polikoff, Member Board of Licenses for Towing Services, District 14.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 18-0146 Avis Ransom, Member Sustainability Commission, District 3.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee. Bills will be introduced.
City Council Bill 18-0224 City Streets Opening Eastbourne Avenue and a Portion of Savage Street for the Purpose of Condemning and Opening Eastbourne Avenue Line Between Rapola Street and Savage Street and a Portion of Savage Street Extending from the North Side of Hollabird Avenue Northerly 659 Feet, More or Less, to the Northernmost Extremity of it, as shown on Plaid 337-A-27 in the Office of the Department of Transportation and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0225 City Streets Closing Eastbourne Avenue and a Portion of Savage Street for the Purpose of Condemning and Closing Eastbourne Avenue Line Between Rapola Street and Savage Street and a Portion of Savage Street Extending from the North Side of Hollabird Avenue Northerly 659 Feet, More or Less, to the Northernmost Extremity of it, as shown on Plaid 337-A-27A in the Office of the Department of Transportation and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0226 Sale of Property Former Beds of Eastbourne Avenue and a Portion of Savage Street for the Purpose of Authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interest in certain parcels of land known as the former bed of Eastbourne Avenue Line Between Rapola Street and Savage Street and the former bed of a Portion of Savage Street Extending from the North Side of Hollabird Avenue Northerly 659 Feet, More or Less, to the Northernmost Extremity of it and no longer needed for public use and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0227 City Streets Closing Wilcox Street and Five Alley's Bounded by East Chase Street, Enzer Street, East Eager Street and Valley Street for the Purpose of Condemning and Closing Wilcox Street and Five Alley's Bounded by East Chase Street, Enzer Street, East Eager Street and Valley Street, as shown on Plaid 331-A-15A in the Office of the Department of Transportation and Providing for a Special Effective Date. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0228 Issuance of Revenue Obligation Stormwater Projects for the Purpose of Authorizing the Issuance, Sale and Delivery from Time to Time by the City of Revenue Obligations That May Be Issued by the City to Finance or Refinance Stormwater Facilities Prescribing That the Maximum Aggregate Principal Amount of Such Revenue Obligations That May Be Outstanding at Any One Time is $202 Million. Authorizing the Board of Finance of the City to Specify, Prescribe, Determine, Provide For, Approve and Amend the Form, Terms, Provisions, Manner or Method of Issuing and Selling, The Time or Times of Issuance and All Other Details of the Revenue Obligations and Any Other Matters Necessary or Desirable in a Connection with the Authorization, Issuance, Sale, Payment of These Revenue Obligations Providing for a Special Effective Date and Generally Relating to the Issuance and Payment of Revenue Obligations. Sponsored City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0229 Charter Amendment Fair Election Fund for the Purpose of Authorizing the Establishment of a Continuing Non-Lapsing Fair Election Fund to be Used Exclusively to Administer a Public Financing Option for Political Campaigns for Baltimore City-Elected Offices. Authorizing the Mayor and City Council to Dedicate Revenue to the Fair Election Fund by Ordinance, Establishing a Fair Election Fund Commission to Administer the Fund and Supporting This Amendment to the Qualified Voters of the City for Adoption or Rejection. Sponsors Burnett, Henry, Dorsey, Bullock, Pinkett, Scott, Cohen, Snead, Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm really excited about this bill. I think it can have a huge impact on elections in Baltimore City moving forward so that people running for office can spend more time talking to voters, hearing what their issues are and developing really strong and vibrant campaigns and less time spending time raising money. All of us know that elections are expensive when it comes to yard signs, t-shirts, billboards and any other method to get your word out. And that time and money can really have an impact on who can run for office. And we want to make sure that elections in Baltimore are equitable and fair and that people who have good ideas and great ambition and care about the city of Baltimore like we all do can always have an opportunity to lead the city forward. From 2012 to 2017, city council races became 50% more expensive and the mayor's race was 25% more expensive from the previous election. And so as that number continues to grow higher and higher, the pool of viable candidates will go lower. And so what this does is, it's an answer to that. It's an answer to pushing for a more democratic process and more equity in elections and giving our voters more control over who gets the opportunity to serve in these seats that we have today. So I look forward to a very spirited discussion on this bill in committee and to thank you to all my co-sponsors. I appreciate your support and looking forward to moving this bill forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0230 Ethics Code Transparency and Lobbying Act for the Purpose of Acquiring Quarterly Rather Than Annual Lobbying Reports from Lobbyists. Requiring the Ethics Board to Post Lobbying Reports Online Within 30 Days of Their Receipt. Requiring that Lobbyists Affirmatively Identify Themselves and Their Clients When Engaging in Lobbying Activities. Allowing the Ethics Board to Permit/Prohibit a Person Found to Have Violated the Lobbying Provisions of the Ethics Code from Lobbying City Public Servants for Up to Three Years. Clarifying and Conforming Related Provisions and Generally Relating to the Regulation of Lobbyists. Sponsors Cohen, Clark, Henry, President Young, Dorsey, Bullock, Pinkett, Schleifer, Scott, Snead, Reisinger.
Please note Council Vice President Middleton as a co-sponsor and Councilman Burnett as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for your leadership on the issue of transparency in government. Like most good ideas, this one came from communities, community members who wanted to have a stronger voice in how our government operates. It does three main things. One is force lobbyists to affirmatively disclose who they are and who they represent. Two, it increases reporting requirements to four times per year and puts those reports online. And then three, if a lobbyist repeatedly violates the ethics code, they can be suspended for up to three years. I want to be clear that this law is not anti-lobbyist, it is pro-transparency. When we know across the country mistrust of government is high, at the national level we have a president who campaigned on draining the swamp, yet surrounded himself with cronies and con men and may very well have colluded with a foreign government. We in Baltimore have an opportunity to once again be a national leader on the issue of transparency. And so again, I want to thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my colleagues and I want to thank all the citizens who showed up today to fight for this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee.
City Council Bill 18-0231 RPP Area 24 Greenway Plan Amendment for the Purpose of Amending the Parking Management Plan for RPP Area 24 to Prohibit Parking Without an Area 24 Permit or Visitor Pass from 7:00 a.m. through 12:00 midnight, Monday through Saturday, Correcting Related Language and Setting a Special Effective Date. Sponsors Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Mr. President, members, thank you for your attention. We, I have a number of my constituents who've been parking in the same parking garage for decades and now it's been sold and they got to get out. And they happen to live in an RPP area on the Greenway, on Greenway, near University Parkway, and there's no room on the street for them. So this is a revision of their current RPP residential permit parking plan that is, that eliminates any free time within that, within the hours of enforcement for anyone else to park there. So it clears some space for the evictees to be able to park near their homes. Thank you.
This has been assigned to the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Resolution is introduced.
City Council Resolution 18-0078R Informational Hearing Coordination of City Watch and Coordination of City Watch with ATVES and DAS installations for the Purpose of Calling on Representatives from the Department of Transportation, the Baltimore Police Department, Baltimore City Information Technology, the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, the Department of Finance, the Office of Real Estate, the Department of Planning and the Mayor's Office of Sustainable Solutions to appear before the council to testify on how DAS and ATVES installations can ease the burden of cost of installation of additional city watch cameras. Sponsors Costello, Pinkett, President Young, Stokes, Scott, Bullock, Dorsey, Middleton, Reisinger, Henry, Clark, Schleifer, Cohen, Snead.
Please note Councilman Burnett as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a follow-up from a discussion that the Budget Appropriations Committee had dealing with how we could maximize existing DAS or distributed antenna system installations and ATVES, which is the red light speed and truck enforcement cameras throughout the city. We know that the infrastructure costs associated with installing a city watch camera can sometimes be in the neighborhood of $30,000 to $50,000. But in locations where we already have this infrastructure, we're able to dramatically reduce that cost. Thank you for your support, Mr. President, and look forward to having a hearing on this as we go into budget season. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Budget Appropriations Committee.
City Council Resolution 18-0079R Informational Hearing New Federal Opportunity Zone Program for the Purpose of Supporting the City's Proportionate Proposal for Designating Opportunity Zones in Baltimore and Calling on Representatives from the Baltimore Development Corporation and the Department of Finance to appear before the city council to discuss the city's plans to coordinate with communities to attract truly impactful investment to Baltimore's new opportunity zones once the program goes into effect. Sponsors Bullock, Henry, President Young, Dorsey, Costello, Pinkett, Schleifer, Cohen, Middleton, Scott, Stokes, Snead, Clark, Reisinger.
Please note Councilman Burnett as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Definitely want to thank all of our colleagues for unanimously supporting this resolution to have this hearing. We believe that for more information would be needed, also Councilman Henry also worked closely with us on this. We recognize that many parts of Baltimore have lacked opportunity and this might be a great opportunity for our city to push areas that have lacked development over the years. So we know that there were 44 submissions, 41 sites were selected for the city. And so we do want to have more detail of what the cities, citizens of Baltimore can expect from this program and how it can infuse new life and resources into neighborhoods like the ones I represent in West Baltimore, but also our colleagues in East Baltimore as well that have lacked this infusion of resources over the years. So we look forward to having an effective hearing in the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee. Thank you so much.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee. Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I would like to move to suspend the appropriate rules so that a city council resolution can be introduced from the floor.
Second by Councilman Reisinger. All those in favor of suspending rules to allow for introduction to this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently rules are suspended and the resolution can be introduced and will be City Council Resolution 18-0080R. The clerk will read the resolution and to the record.
City Council Resolution 18-0080R Traffic Light Synchronization for the Purpose of Calling on the Department of Transportation to Ensure That Traffic Lights Citywide Are Properly Synchronized Prior to the Start of Baltimore's Don't Block the Box Program. Sponsors President Young.
Okay, this legislation was introduced after we were informed that the Transportation Department were going to put in place Don't Block the Box program. And from that, it was going to be a point assessed to the city residents, but thanks to the mayor, that point won't be there. But I feel very strongly that until we have all of our lights synchronized, that we should not move forward. So we're asking them not to move forward until all of the lights have been properly synchronized so that we can make sure that the free flow of traffic is flowing to such a manner where people won't be caught trapped in the box. If you notice, when you're coming out of City Hall and you go on to Fair Street to make a left-hand turn at Gay, only two cars can actually get through there at a time. And because it's not synchronized correctly, it'd be a long line from City Hall all the way to Gay Street. Now, the traffic that's coming, I guess that would be north going that way, the lights run long. When it's going north, I mean west, it's long. But when you're trying to make that left-hand turn, you can't make that turn. And you could really be caught in that box if someone is not paying attention and sitting there at the light or sitting to make that turn. When the light turns green, you can be caught in that box. So we're asking the Transportation Department not to move forward until they can assure the council that a proper study was done to make sure all those lights are synchronized Co-sponsors, Scott, Henry, Middleton, Schleifer, Cohen, Pinkett, Reisinger, Burnett, Costello, Stokes, Burnett, I mean, Bullock, Mary Pat Clark, Shannon Snead, did I say Stokes? Stokes. Want to thank all of my co-sponsors. This has been assigned to the Judiciary and Legislative Investigation Committee. What'd you say? No? No? Okay. All right. You can find the consent count in Section A at the back of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent count? It was moved by Councilman Scott, second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor approving the consent count, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion currently this count is approved. We now move the bills on second reader. Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 18-0134 Larry Gibson, Member of Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, District 14.
Chair recognizes Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee held a hearing on April 18th of 2018. I find the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. This nominee have been confirmed. Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 17-0155 Zoning Condition to Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R7 Zoning District, 2415 West Lexington Street for the Purpose of Permitting Subject to Certain Conditions the Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R7 Zoning District on a Property Known as 2415 West Lexington Street as outlined in red on the accompanying plaid.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. Finding of facts adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilman Bullock. All those in favor approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 18-0182 Zoning Condition to Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District, Varian 600 East 29th Street for the Purpose of Permitting Subject to Certain Conditions the Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R8 Zoning District on a Property Known as 600 East 29th Street, Block 4072A, Lot 033, as outlined in red on the accompanying plaid and granting a variance from certain off-street parking regulations.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor approving the finding of facts, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. Finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 17-0106 Resoning 3601 through 3605 Park Heights Avenue for the Purpose of Changing the Zoning for the Property Known as 2300 Edmondson Avenue as outlined in red on the accompanying plaid from the R7 Zoning District to the C1 Zoning District. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18-0183 Urban Renewal Coldstream Homestead Montebello Amendment for the Purpose of Amending the Urban Renewal Plan for Coldstream Homestead Montebello to Modify the List of Uses Prohibited in the Urban Renewal Area Waiving Certain Content and Procedural Requirements Making the Provisions of this Ordinance Severable Providing for the Application of this Ordinance in Conjunction with Certain Other Ordinances and Providing for a Special Effective Date. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcement. Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
Taxation, Finance and Economic Development Committee will hear City Council Bill 18-0208 Thursday, May 17th at 10:05 a.m. Here in council chambers. I move for suspension of rules, 10-2 required agency reports.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor, suspend the rules to announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion is current. Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
And again, that's Bill 18-0208 Sale of Property Former Bed of East, Eastbourne Avenue and a 10-foot alley. Bill number two will also be heard on Thursday, May 17th. That's Bill number 18-02- That's Bill number 18-0211 at 10:10 a.m. here in council chambers. I move for suspension of the rules 10-2, required agency reports.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those who favor suspending rules to announce a hearing, say aye? Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
And again, that is Bill 18-0211, Bond Issue on Affordable Housing Loan. Also, on Thursday, May 17th, 2018, Bill number 18-0212, 10:15 a.m. here in council chambers. I move for suspension of the rules.
Second by Councilman Scott.
10-2.
You can go ahead.
10-2, Required Agency Reports.
Second by Councilman Scott. All those who favor suspending rules, announce a hearing, say aye? Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. Chair recognizes Councilwoman.
And again, that is Bill 18-0212, Bond Issue School Loan. The next is Bill number 18-0213, Thursday, May 17th, 2018, 2020 a.m. here in council chambers. I move for suspension of the rules 10-2, Required Agency Reports.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those who favor suspending rules to announce a hearing, say aye? Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
And again, that was Bill 18-0213, Bond Issue Community and Economic Development Loan. And the next and last bill, number 18-0214, Thursday, May 17th, 2018, 10:25 a.m. here in council chambers. I move for suspension of the rules 10-2, Required Agency Reports.
Second by Councilwoman Sneed. All those who favor suspending rules to announce a hearing, say aye? Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved. Chair recognizes.
And that was Bill 18-0214, Bond Issue Recreation Parks and Public Facilities Loan.
Committee, committee, committee hearing. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Mr. President, Executive Appointments Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, May 2nd, beginning at 10 a.m. for the board of license for towing services for Samuel Polikov. The Executive Appointments Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, May 9th, 2018, at 10 a.m. to view the following nomination for Sustainability Commission, which would be Ava's ransom. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock. I was going to go in order, but.
Thank you, Mr. President. So on Tuesday, May 15th, we'll be hearing two additional bills in Housing and Urban Affairs. The first is City Council Bill 18-0206, Ordinate City Streets Opening Eastbourne Avenue in a 10-foot alley. That will be at 2:05. And then at 2:10, we'll be hearing Council Bill 18-0207, Ordinate City Streets Closing of Eastbourne Avenue in the 10-foot alley. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilman Reisinger. All those who favor suspending rules, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion is approved. Rules suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, May 9th at 5 p.m. This will be televised on Charm TV. This is Bill number 18-0080R, Traffic Light Synchronization at the request of Council President Young. The Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, May 17th at 1 p.m. This will be two hearings. The first is 17-0003R, Third Quarter Projections for Fiscal Year 2018 with the Bureau of Budget Management Research, and also Third Quarter Projections for Fiscal Year 2018 for Baltimore City Public School System. On that same day, Thursday, May 17th at 2 p.m., we will then hold a budget overview hearing for fiscal year 19 for both Department of Finance, Bureau of Budget Management Research, and Baltimore City Public School System. And there is not a bill number yet for that, but that should be introduced before then. And finally, on that same day, Thursday, May 17th at 5 p.m., we will hold a hearing on the constant yield tax rate for Baltimore City, which the rest of us, or most of us know is the real property tax rate, and that will be City Council Taxpayer Night, where citizens are encouraged to come in and will be given an opportunity to voice their concerns about the budget and about the tax rate, and that will be televised on Charm TV. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, the Land Use and Transportation Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 18-0187 on June 6th at 1 p.m. in the council chambers. This is a zoning use regulation for live entertainment. Mr. President, I also want to remind everyone that Wednesday, April 25th at 5 p.m., the committee will hold a hearing on City Council Bill 17-0102 on complete streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more committee announcement? Regular announcement. Chair recognizes council, let's do him first. I have you last, if you don't mind. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott. You don't mind, do you?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, I just simply rise and ask that Council Vice President Middleton offer a moment of silence for the 87 victims of homicides in Baltimore City and their families, and all the lives of the people we've lost at the opioid crisis in Baltimore as well. Thank you.
Chair recognizes, who else was it? Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Over the last several months, my office has worked with artists who live in the 3rd District and folks who contribute to the arts and cultural community of the city, from across the city to shape a grant-making program called Artist District, where we'll be giving away grants to four 3rd District residents. So I just want to let you know that if you know anybody who lives in the 3rd District and is an artist and is 20 years of age or older, we will be giving away four grants for $3,000 each through a lottery system to try to get past a lot of the subjectivity that is typically imposed on arts grant-making programs, where you have a panel of people kind of imposing their own interests on things and having often disparate kind of outcomes to them. So we're really looking forward to supporting arts and cultural makers with your visual artist, theater artist, writer, musician, playwright, dancer, whatever your creative practice may be. If it's a current creative practice, you live in the 3rd District and you're 20 years of age, go to artistdistrict.org or direct anybody you know to artistdistrict.org to fill out a very simple application that's free, and we'll be doing the decision-making by lottery at the end of May. Thanks.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to ask Vice President Middleton to hold a moment of silence for Diamante Howard, young man who was tragically murdered this past weekend. He's actually a young guy I knew, had volunteered on my campaign, just a really good young person, graduated from Patterson High School, went away for a year to Atlanta, came back and was shot and killed, like so many young people in our city. Did not deserve to die, so if we could hold him in our prayers as well, I'd appreciate it.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I got a call this morning from a constituent that is a very strong advocate in autism, and so we're going to be working to do some awareness together. So I just want to, just a reminder that this month of April is Autism Awareness Month, and blue is their color, so at some point try to support autism. And if you don't know what autism is, it's a mental condition where the young person has difficulty in communicating or getting familiar with and building relationships with other people. So we do have a large percentage of young people that have autism in this city. So again, it's all about acceptance and inclusion in our schools and communities, and that result in the true appreciation of the unique aspects of all people.
And while you're doing the, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark. While you're doing the, excuse me, while you're doing the announcement for those who have passed, please include in there First Lady Barbara Bush. Okay? Thank you. Chair recognizes.
I'm sorry, I wasn't planning to say anything except that when the Vice President mentioned autism, in the 14th District is Sam's Cafe. It's in the unit block of West University Parkway, and it is operated, owned and operated on behalf of and by autistic young men, autistic young man and his family. And it's great. So if people want to help support the cause, stop in for a cup of coffee at Sam's Cafe on West University Parkway. They do close at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, so try to make it for breakfast or lunch. It's a great place, and I hope you'll always mention it when you mention this cause because it's a demonstration of independent living. Thanks.
Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
The next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, April 30th, 2018, and may we have a moment of silence for the family of Diamante Howard and also First Lady Barbara Bush, and also for the 87 victims of homicide in the city, and for the continual deaths due to the opioid epidemic.
There be no further business. This concludes the 30-second meeting of the 72nd Term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.